All right, everybody, let's go ahead and start to get seated here. Hey, everybody, all right. It is 2:04 PM on this Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And now I would like to invite Clerk Joe Rodriguez for roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Church.
Here.
And Vice President Mayberry is excused today for his duties. And Trustee Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
I am here, President Smith.
Here.
Trustee Westlake.
Here.
And Trustee Woodley, I believe he was delayed. And our student representative, Annie. Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you so much. And Trustee Woodley will be joining us. And when he does join us, we will welcome him and mark that time. And so now we'll move on to item 1.03. And this is an opportunity to acknowledge the tremendous emergency that is affecting so many of our neighbors and our community members in Washoe County and South Reno, Arrow Creek and Galena. We understand that thousands of people in our community are without their homes, their pets, and there's been tremendous loss. And so this pledge of allegiance is in recognition of the two hero colleagues that I sit with here on this dais that in their day jobs have been working with this. So you'll notice that at the dais right now, we do not have Vice President Adam Mayberry. And that is because he performs as the Information Officer for the Trekkie Meadows Regional Fire. And also at this dais, we have our Clerk Joe Rodriguez, who is the Assistant Fire Marshal for the Nevada State Police. And they've both been involved with this incident. And so Clerk Joe Rodriguez, on behalf of Vice President Mayberry and all of the incredible first responders and emergency professionals who are working right now in threat of their own life to save our community and everything, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and thank you again to our first responders and emergency personnel. And now we'll move on to item 1.04. This is our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Niwui, Western Shoshone and Nu'u, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. All right, everybody, that closes Section 1. And I'm going to go ahead and open Section 2, our Consent Agenda items. But before we go into that, I do want to make some announcements about today's meeting. In recognition of what we have happening here regionally, there will be some changes to today's agenda that will be pulled forward to a future meeting. And that includes, so everyone is aware, we will not today be hearing items 4.01, 4.02, and 4.04. Those will pull forward to a future meeting and ideally the next meeting. The status of 4.05 is still be to determine. And so we will see and make, I will make a determination on that as the meeting manager, depending on how we're advancing with the timeline. Also, for the order of that section, that will be item 4.03. I will then hear item 4.06. And at that point, may make a decision on the status of 4.05. Also, so that everyone is aware upfront, I've also made the decision to forego under Section 5, 5.02, those are the board reports among the trustees. And as we go, if anybody joins with the public, I'll certainly continue to reiterate this as we go. So those items will be pulled or the one item will be determined at a later point during the agenda. So now coming back to Section 2, our Consent Agenda items. I know we have a definite pull for item 2.16. And Trustee Church, where did you land on item 2.03?
To pull that, 2.03, the capital project audit.
Okay. Very good. That, yeah, the audit of the Capital Improvement Program. Okay, very good. So we'll go ahead and we'll pull items 2.03 and 2.16. That leaves us with items 2.02, 2.04 to 2.15, and 2.17 to 2.19. I don't see any lights on. So JJ, do we have any public comment for those items?
I do not.
All right. Well, I will bring it back to this body here to see if there's a motion to approve item 2.02, 2.04 to 2.15, and 2.17 to 2.19.
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion by Trustee Nicolet, a second by Clerk Rodriguez, to approve those items as stated. I see no lights on for further discussion. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we'll go ahead and we will move on to item 2.03 as a standalone item. This is the possible action to accept the audit of the Washoe County School District Capital Improvement Program Professional Services Report by BDO dated March 28th, 2024, as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee and Audit Committee. This is an item for possible action. I see that we have Kirk Starkey, our Chief Internal Auditor here. But first, we'll go ahead and turn it to Trustee Church.
Thank you very much. Number one, for the record, the audit was great. It found very few issues of the capital project, basically building, et cetera. So going to the executive summary, it drew attention to the need for some clarification on, correction, Administrative Regulation 3323, Professional Services. Can you comment on that and what the plan is to fix it?
Yes, sir. Kirk Starkey, for the record. Basically, that is an item where when the auditors were doing the work, they determined that that reg was vague in a way, meaning that contracts between, I think, zero and $99,000. It wasn't talking about who it applied to. And they just want clarification on that added that it will or will not apply to contractors in this area.
Does that include, or are we referring basically to when we renew contracts without competitive bid? Is that what it's referring to?
No, it's more like when these were going out for this, in this area for professional services, like the architects, the engineers, on those amounts. They should clarify exactly what it pertains to. That was kind of the ambiguity. But I see Andrea's probably got a way better answer.
Go ahead.
Hi there. Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contracts, for the record. So what that audit found, when I was involved with writing the procedure for professional services, I was really writing it in mind for consultants and guest speakers and training and things like that on the non-construction side. I really wasn't thinking about architects, engineers, things like that. So that's how I wrote the admin reg and the policy to, in my mind, was geared towards non-construction consultants. But I didn't make that clear in the, in the policy. And so our, our process for engineers and architects and things like that is a bit different. And I didn't make that clear. So if this board accepts the recommendations from this audit, then I will then clarify the, the policy to make it clear that there's a little bit of a different process for the engineers and architects.
Then that policy would come back for public review and review.
I mean, if it's a policy.
Correction, regulation.
Right, I, I'm sorry. If it's an admin reg, then it doesn't come back to the board.
Okay, and that's, that's my next question. I will, I am guilty. I didn't research this like I wish I had time to. Do we need to change our policy, do you think? Because all the regulations are based on policy.
Right. Not that I'm aware of. Our, this is particular, this is specifically geared at our professional services administrative regulation. And we don't have a board policy on that. So I think we can make the clarifications in the administrative regulation.
Would it be fair to say you look into that?
Absolutely.
To make sure our policies aren't conflicting, or if we need a policy, we'll get it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that and put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, so I'll bring it back to this board. And I'm looking for a motion to approve item 2.03.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion, again, by Trustee Diane Nicolet, seconded by Clerk Joe Rodriguez, to approve item 2.03. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, Mr. Starkey. And we got to do six to zero on this one because, just so we have the timestamp on this, Trustee Alex Woodley joined us at 2:13 PM. So thank you all so much. All right. Okay, now we're going to go ahead and move on to item 2.16. This is the approval of the 2024-25 Elementary and Secondary Student Behavior Manual and Certification that Washoe County School District Schools Are In Compliance With Nevada Revised Statutes NRS 392.4644 and 392.4645. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us Dr. Paul Lamarcas. And I would want to make sure that we fully invite everybody that we have in front of us.
Hi, Lindsay Kendrick. I'm the Director of Student Behavior and Student Supports for the district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kendrick. Okay, I know that there were a few different colleagues that had some questions on this. But as the official trustee pulling the item, I will defer to you first. Trustee Church.
Thank you. Yes, there were some really good back and forth questions. Got really into the weeds about what's a, what's a deadly weapon versus a normal weapon or whatever. And if you brandish it, et cetera. Kind of made my head spin a little bit. Kind of cutting to the chase, to the short version, we approved a policy, I think, about a year ago. I guess we have to do this, is it true we do it every year?
Yes, Trustee Church, it's required by statute that you approve it annually.
And rather than except last year's, there were a number of legislative changes that we incorporated in this one.
No.
Oh, no.
Last year, we incorporated the legislative changes. There were some minor changes this year. You see that we have two separate manuals, an elementary and a secondary. But last year was a very comprehensive, thorough review. This one is, is less so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I think if I remember right, my big concern was that the manual gives a lot of leeway to staff and your office in how we adjudicate these matters. Do we have stats since we have it last year, the new manual? Are we improving, are we not improving? I guess, I guess I'll ask that first.
I'll start, and Ms. Kendrick may want to weigh in. So it's, it's a bit of a mixed bag. I will tell you that through her office, I think we had 140 hearings last year, which was up about 100 from the previous year. Now, that's consistent with the legislative changes that we requested. Because you will recall the major changes were to First Defense Batteries and First Defense Distribution of Drugs. So we expected that change. But we, we are surveilling what's happening in our schools. In terms of major behaviors at the high school level, they're significantly down based on 23-24. But in middle school, they're up. Elementary, they're pretty flat, but they're, they're up marginally. Suspensions really follows the same pattern, significantly down at high school, up in middle school. middle school, and slightly up in elementary school.
I, I think that's, I have a couple comments, but I think I, that's all I have for questions for now.
Um, and I'll jump in here too, so this is a really good opportunity to kinda catch everyone up. So um, I was also, I, I asked a lot of those questions that we went back and forth about. So really where this was from a community standpoint, and I believe it was late fall, early winter, two thousand twenty-one. And this was on consent, and there were a lot of questions and conversations at the time. Um, I pulled it off of consent, and that ultimately led to nearly a full year's worth of incredibly intense work by this team in front of us and many other people to overhaul the behavior manual and the discipline matrix, and also led to a very intense legislative session in two thousand twenty-three. Um, so wait, I think I would have pulled it in December of twenty-two, and then we went through twenty-three. And then um, that is also when we partnered with Governor Lombardo's office, uh, with former board president, um, Assemblywoman Dr. Angie Taylor, among others, to see a lot of these law changes. It led to a meaningfully different um, behavior manual, and this board approved that after we had workshops, we had outreach, and that's what we approved last year. So now this is the next iteration of it. Um, and just so everybody can kinda be caught up with how that all took place. So I asked quite a few of the questions. Um, so anybody following along in the public, one of the things that our board, I think that's unique to governing bodies in Nevada and certainly among trustees um, in school boards, is that we ask questions in advance. Those questions and those answers become part of the public record so that everybody can follow along and learn as we do. So some of the questions I really dialed into was what constitutes a dangerous weapon? And I don't have the intention of making any recommendations to change the manual, but I will tell you, when I was reading the manual and I saw things suggesting that law is ambiguous, that troubles me. We later today are gonna be settling on topics for our legislative platform. And so I asked the questions that I did because if there is ambiguity in the law or if we feel we cannot be taking action because there is uncertainty about what constitutes a dangerous weapon, a knife, a type of firearm, I really want to know that now, um, because we have that opportunity later in this meeting to discuss wide topics that we'd like to see reflected. So I saw the back and forth, I appreciate all those answers, but we still have it written that there's ambiguity in the law that creates complications. What I do not want is for thereto ever to be an emergency here at the Washoe County School District where a student who has previously brought a weapon that common sense may dictate as a dangerous weapon, but for some reason, we feel that NRS did not allow us to designate it as a dangerous weapon, and then have us say, well, there was ambiguity or we weren't sure. That is what I don't wanna have happen. So my question right now is, knowing that we're going into this other item related to the behavior manual and related to what we have written here, are you recommending that we advance or bring a focus to the need to clarify any of these things in law around student behavior? And I'm not talking specificity, just the general topic. It's hard for me to read in the manual that there's ambiguity holding us back. So I want to know, is, are these things that we need to be addressing or taking a position on in the upcoming legislative session as it relates to what we have in today's behavior manual?
Thank you, President Smith, for the question, and again, I'll start, and Lindsay may uh, wanna chime in. The word ambiguity is, is an interesting word, and I don't think the intent of what we wrote uh, was to say that the law itself was ambiguous. The intent was to say that every one of these situations is unique and requires administrators to use professional judgment. There are very few instances in which the law is crystal clear that if X occurred, Y must occur. If you bring a firearm to school, you must be removed. But without a citation from a school police officer indicating that a student is in possession of a dangerous weapon as defined by statute, we still have administrative obligations, and given the context of the situation, we may treat a cellphone or a remote control or a microphone as a dangerous weapon. If someone was to grab this and chase one of us down and try to hit us in the head, that is threatening us with a dangerous weapon, and that's how we would proceed. So really what we're getting at is, is the essence of these situations where our school administrators and our district administrators have to uh, use their own professional judgment. I, I would suggest that perhaps if, if, if Chief Moore is present, he ought to comment on the law specifically. I do not think that our law is creating uh, an obstacle for us. I don't know that it could be more clear. There are certainly some minor definitional, definitional things around knives and stuff of that nature that might help school police in their citing a student, but from our angle, I don't think uh, there's a need for a correction in that statute.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you for that explanation, and, and I must say that I, I do understand an ambiguity might be the right word, and it, but it's very situational, absolutely. Um, this could be a dangerous weapon, a pen could be a dangerous weapon. My question is, and thank you for bringing this up, is that we have an administrative regulation forty-six seventy-five that I'm going to assume will be updated because the last time it was updated was seven years ago. So I would hope that we will look at that to, to align them. And then, this won't surprise you, I'm always about that training so that teachers, administrators, bus drivers, et cetera, can have these discussions.
We're all trying to look it up at the same time. You got us on that one. I guess the bottom line, I remember this exact conversation uh, last year, as well as, I appreciate the board president did far more homework than I did, and thanks for refreshing my memory, cause she, she nailed it. It's the, my personal opinion, just me personally, discipline can be a good thing sometimes, and we have to err on the side of protecting the teacher and the staff. And if a teacher says, I really don't want this student back in the classroom, I honestly, ninety-nine percent, I believe that teacher has to be supported. You know, absent just something where it's just not, not right, but you know, so I just wanna put that on the record. Just like last year, I was really torn. I, I think I'm gonna vote yes, but um, it's not the manual, it's how we enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am president. I know this board and the staff, we pretty much went as zero tolerance as we could about a year ago on these things. And you're stating that you seem an incline uh, pretty much into secondary education, middle school? Is that correct?
Middle school and elementary, not high school. High school down.
Okay, uh, do you project, you know, that as word gets out, hopefully, that these actions are unacceptable, that you, you, we hopefully will see a decline in this?
Yes, we, we are optimistic. We, as I think Dr. Nicolette mentioned, last year, we trained heavily on the implementation of the manual. Lindsay and Trish Schaefer are doing that again this year. I do think that we need to strengthen uh, some of our core practices with positive behavior interventions and supports uh, to get in front of some of these things. I, I really believe, I will tell you another piece of data, which is hard to talk about, but I'm gonna go ahead and talk about it, is anecdotally, we did not have the problems last year that we had two years ago. Uh, in other words, people were handling situations, so they're up, but that sometimes is a good thing. Better documentation, people are on top of things. I do think that in time, we will see declines in some of these behaviors, especially with some of our associated strategies that we're bringing to bear. Additional clubs and activities, cellphone use, there's a lot of things that contribute to these kinds of things that hopefully altogether, we'll see the declines that we want.
And then just, just for the record, especially given like the recent climate that we've had threats against our schools, can you kinda just tell the general public or who might be watching, like, what is kind of the standard norm of corrective behavior for threats against our schools?
When we receive, well, well, so the, the kinds of threats that we just uh, had uh, that were sort of social media based, school police handles those, they take it with utmost seriousness, we have internal messages, messages out to the community, and of course, they investigate that. And as you know, we've had instances in this district where something that originated back east somehow just gets floated over, and then we're dealing with that, taking away uh, important resources to investigate that. When we have a threat within a school, we have a threat assessment process, it's a comprehensive process. We immediately do a threat inquiry, that's usually handled by a principal or a counselor or school psychologist. If they determine that it was a transient situation, like a, a student just got upset and said some things that they really didn't mean, maybe they're crying in the office now, they may consider that transient. If it's beyond transient, they're, they believe that the threat is of medium or high concern, we will likely have what we call a comprehensive assessment uh, where we fully investigate situation, we interview everyone involved, we develop safety plans for the community and for the student, and as necessary, we may remove a student under those circumstances. But we take every threat with, with seriousness.
Thank you, ma'am president.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. So I was gonna ask about something, but I wanna get back to the, what you just said, Dr. Lamarcas, the transient, and that maybe wouldn't be handled as, you take it serious, but maybe it wouldn't have as serious as repercussion? Because the students in the office now crying, but maybe they're in the office now crying because they just got caught, and they know it could be serious. So I, I'm just kind of a little bit concerned about that, because to me, when threats are made, the only way we are going to absolutely stop this in its tracks is to take it and just have a hard-nosed line on threats. I mean, this disrupts our children's education, it causes turmoil for our teachers and stress for our students. Everybody now feels unsafe again, and every time this happens, it's just like another gut punch, another gut punch. And so, I mean, it could be very subjective as to why that child is crying. And I mean, if we, I know we wanna think the best, but for a student to do something like that, go online and do that, and then they go into the office and they're crying, I, I mean, it could just be said as well that now they're caught and so they're crying. It's not that, oh, I really wasn't that serious about it, it's like, oh crap, I just got caught. You know, so are we taking a hard line or are we gonna have this subjective, you know, cause maybe this student is a great crier, you know, and so, and then another student comes in and they're just a little bit crying, and now you, you're putting a subjective spin on it, oh, well, this student feels really bad because it's, he's crying buckets, but this student over here is just sniveling a little bit. Well, maybe this one, the one that's just sniveling is the one who's really sorry, but this one's just a good, I, I just, I don't know, I just, I mean, to me, we either take a hard line on this and try and end this kind of behavior, or we keep allowing ambiguity and subjective. I don't know.
Before Dr. Lamarcas responds, after this, we're gonna go to public comment. I saw you had your light on, and then, and then maybe we can move forward.
And I, I just have one more thing too.
Yep, so I'll let Dr. Lamarcas go. We will close your item, and then we'll go on to public comment, and then continue again with trustee Church.
So thank you for the question, and perhaps I introduced ambiguity by using the word crying. Partly what I'm getting at is, and superintendent Ernst has dealt with this firsthand, so maybe he could explain. I don't know the students in our schools the way the principals know the students in our school. Let's say a fifth grade child is on a playground and he gets upset because someone took the basketball from him, and he says, I'm gonna kill you, and runs off. So that might be a situation in which that threat is transient. It doesn't mean there aren't consequences. It doesn't mean there isn't a major behavior that you made a threat, we will not tolerate that, and we create a plan to support that child to better respond to those conflicting situations. Um, what, what I'm getting at is for the threat itself, to make sure our community is safe and the student is safe, we have a very detailed process. There is still a whole disciplinary section, and you'll see that outlined at the manual, when we have threats to students and threats to staff. So what I would say is, we do take a very conservative and hard line with respect to these instances, but we also are going to try to support our students as best we can every, every time something like this occurs.
That makes me feel better, just, that does, thank you. The other thing, um, kind of adding to what trustee Nicolette said about the, you know, the teachers getting the support and the education and the training and our bus drivers, I think that's really important, but especially looking at what just happened in Georgia. What type of communication are we going to do, uh, engaging the parents? Letting the parent, also training the parents that this is the stance we're taking, so you are aware, you know, things are gonna be a lot tighter and stricter, and these things are not gonna be tolerated. How are we going to be transparent and communicate this to the parents? And I think the Georgia's.
And I think everyone appreciates where you're going with this, especially given the recent tragedy in Georgia. This is still really a discussion of the behavior manual, and those processes are probably in excess of the agenda item. Or not probably, they are. However, you, I asked those questions through superintendent Ernst.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right, JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
All right, uh, trustee Church, I'll give you the final word, and then maybe we can move forward with some action.
Certainly. The manual references NRS three ninety-two, four, six, three, five, policy for prohibition of activities of criminal gangs on school property. I don't find it. Am I missing it? So the, the manual says, lists that Nevada revised statute that says the Board of Trustees will have a policy, and I looked under policy, I didn't find it. So do we need to do that?
I, I believe you will find, excuse me, thank you, uh, trustee Church. I believe you'll find references to that within our um, Board Policy fifty-one hundred on Student Behavior. I will double check on that though, and make sure that if we don't, that we address that.
Okay, that would explain it. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that conversation, everyone. We really appreciate that. And um, now I would be looking for a motion to approve item two point one six. All right.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by clerk Rodriguez, seconded by trustee Woodley. Thank you so much, Dr. Lamarcas and Ms. Kendrick, appreciate that. I see no lights on for further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we're gonna close section two and move on now to section three, our financial items. And we'll go ahead and open items three point zero one, the discussion and possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution two four dash zero one seven, a two thousand twenty-four B school improvement bond resolution authorizing the district to issue general obligation, limited tax, school improvement bonds, series twenty, twenty-four B, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred, ten million, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us Mr. Mark Mathers, our chief financial officer.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, so real quickly, the uh, five-year capital improvement program that this board approved in April really begins the ambitious and aggressive implementation of our facilities modernization plan. As part of that five-year CIP, we programmed a total of six hundred seventy-five million dollars of planned rollover bonds um, issued over the next five years. Um, this is the first chunk of that. This um, resolution would authorize um, myself to begin the sale of, of a hundred point five one five million of rollover bonds, which combined with proceeds from our last sale, will begin implementation again of that CIP. Specifically, this will fund the construction of a brand-new elementary school in the Stead area, uh, the, all phases of the central transportation. of a brand-new elementary school in the Stead area, the, all phases of the central transportation yard project, and then completion of the bond rebuild project. So, in June, you had come, we had come to you, pardon me, for authorization to go to our Debt Management Commission and Oversight Panel for Bond Facilities for their approval, which was required, and we've received from both entities their approval of the transaction. So, this really is the last stop, the last approval point for this board, again, to authorize the sale of these bonds. And so, if approved, we would sell the bonds late September, possibly, but more likely, early October, and then close the transaction by the end of the month of October. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any lights on. So, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Then I'll bring it back to this board, again, seeing no lights, for potential action to approve Item 3.01.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Dr. Diane Nicolet, seconded by Trustee Colleen Westlake. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much. And Mr. Mathers knows not to go far, because that closes Item 3.01 and moves us on now to Item 3.02, the Approval of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-018, a Resolution of Intent Proposing the Issuance of Up to $200 Million in General Obligation Bonds Additionally Secured with Pledged Revenues Providing the Manor, Form, and Content of the Notices and Authorizing Officers of the District to Take Other Actions Necessary to Complete the Issuance and Related Matters. This is again, an item for possible action. And take it away, Mr. Mathers.
Yeah, this is, so this is very similar to the last item. This is a step necessary for selling what we call WC1 bonds. Again, general obligation bonds, just like the last item, but in this case, instead of pledging property taxes, these bonds pledge our WC1 sales tax revenues. There's a little, slightly different process to the sale of WC1 bonds. Again, we went to the Debt Management Commission for approval of these bonds, and the Debt Management Commission approved it. But when selling these types of bonds, there's a petition period. So, this resolution is the second of three steps now towards the path of issuing WC1 bonds. This would authorize us to begin a publication of weekly notices in a general circulation newspaper, expressing our intent to issue these bonds, and then the public would have 90 days to collect signatures, to place this on the ballot if we had 5% of the electorate that did so. So, this begins that petition period, assuming we don't receive a valid petition of at least 5% of voters asking that to be put on the ballot, then we would come back to you later this calendar year with the bond resolution, just like we did in the prior item. So, just a necessary legal step in the process to issue these bonds. And I'll be back to you one more time before we actually sell bonds.
All right. Seeing no lights on, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Again, seeing no lights on, I will look for action to approve Item 3.02.
So moved.
All right. So, we have a motion by Trustee Woodley, seconded by Clerk Rodriguez. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, and thank you so much, Mr. Mathers. All right, that closes Item 3.02 and Section 3 in its entirety. All right, everyone, that now opens Section 4, our Items for Presentation, Discussion, Information, and/or Action. So, now, just as a reminder to anyone who may be joining us, we have deferred and will move forward to a future board meeting, Items 4.01, 4.02, and 4.04. It is undetermined if we will do Item 4.05. We will move that to the end of this section. So, this section will begin now with the opening of Item 4.03. It will follow, be followed by 4.06, and then at that point, I will make a decision about 4.05. So, now, as we open this item, this is Item 4.03, the Discussion and Possible Action, to adopt the negotiated agreement between the Washoe County School District, WCSD, and the School Psychologist Association of Washoe, SPA, for a term of agreement from 2024 to 2025. This is an item for possible action, and we very warmly welcome Dr. Scott Barclay. He is the President of SPA, and then also our General Counsel, Kevin Pick. This is a very exciting item, and we look forward to hearing this presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and board members. I'm Kevin Pick. I'm the district's General Counsel for Labor and Employment Matters. And with me, as President Smith introduced, is Dr. Scott Barclay, who is President of the School Psychologists Association of Washoe, or SPA. Before you for possible action, here is a new CBA between the district and SPA, covering the 2024 to 2027 time period. The proposed CBA includes, is included in the meeting materials, and here is a summary of the actual agreement, the highlights of it. It includes a significant COLA for the employees in this unit, longevity bonuses for recruitment, retention, and some better ways and strategies for employees and their supervisors to work together and to resolve problems. I just want to say that negotiations with SPA were enormously positive and collaborative, and so I want to thank them and their negotiating team, and Dr. Barclay in particular, for really being great partners and reaching a great conclusion to this. We produced, I think, a great CBA here. It's great for this group of employees. It's really going to benefit the students for whom they serve. So, the CBA was also ratified overwhelmingly by the SPA unit members, and the staff recommendation for this item is for the board to approve and ratify the CBA. I'm happy to answer any questions, but before that, I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Barclay.
Awesome. Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and board members. We are so excited to be here. And I have to thank you, what was it, two months ago, we came to you, and we're grateful that you allowed us to be recognized and engage in those conversations, and then here we are, two months later. So grateful that you're considering taking this up for action. I won't go into great detail, but the school psychologists, we do a lot. We have, we're at every single school, we have a lot of responsibilities. In the conversations we were just having about the threat inquiries and things like that, we are an integral member of that team because of our training in child development, social behavioral development supports. So, we are absolutely intimately involved in that process. And I guess I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for considering this.
Our thank you goes to you, our mental health professionals. Your value cannot be overstated, and it's very important that we don't just tell you how grateful we are, but it's important that we compensate you as valued professionals. That's what you deserve.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And so, my only question is, of course, we did pass SB 231, we, as a state, I should say, can we clarify and ensure that this labor group will indeed be able to benefit from that?
That's correct, and that's actually included in the, here in the summary, you see an aggregate 16.75% COLA over four years. That 4% match from SB 231 is included, but it's retroactive. And so, this unit will be getting essentially an 8% retroactive COLA for the last fiscal year, and then for the current fiscal year, '25, there'll be a 4.75% COLA, which we were able to move some things around for them to achieve and get. And then for the remaining two years of it, there's a 2% COLA and a 2% COLA, but those have kind of standard guardrails on it in the event of a downturn in the, or a budget deficit that will protect them, and it also has a re opener above a certain limit in case there's new revenues that come into the district that would provide new COLAs on top of this amount. So, there's those same guardrails that are put in place with some of the other contracts we've recently negotiated.
Well, I'm thrilled to see that this is retroactive, because to me, this feels like we are legitimately and with respect, making your organization whole.
We feel that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please know that this question is meant for you to toot your horn, and I mean that seriously. Mr. Pick mentioned that this will help our students. By the way, I have no doubt about that, but I would like some specifics. I would like our audience, anybody watching, to know what those specifics are, maybe on a daily, weekly, monthly basis.
Absolutely. So, due to, there's a, I'm sure you know, there's a big shortage of school psychologists. So, due to that shortage, not just in our area, certainly in our area, but nationwide, a vast majority of our jobs are helping, like socially and academically, in evaluating children for special education eligibility and services, and also helping to design those interventions. But we go far beyond that, our training. Like, we are available for all children, especially the mental health and the behavioral piece, for sure. That's a very big component. We meet with school teams, I'll speak for myself, I meet with school teams weekly, in terms of how to support those children academically, behaviorally, coming up with programs, collaborating with parents, really getting that school-family partnership, trying to help build that and invite them into the schools. So, we have a lot of, a lot of different roles that we play.
Thank you, and that was just like one, one, it was one of a million.
I'm not good at tooting my horn.
You know, well, it's, and I know for a fact, it can be a 24/7 job.
Absolutely. I got a call from a parent yesterday.
I wanted to take an opportunity to just express our gratitude to our school psychologists, our negotiation team. And, you know, I wanted to also take an opportunity, because you mentioned, Dr. Nicolet, that opportunity to toot our school psychologist's horn. And I'll tell you, as a former school principal, that our school psychologists are integral to so much in our buildings, in terms of supporting students that may have additional needs, to offering professional guidance, to supporting social, emotional needs, and really being integral team members. We talked a bit about safety as well, and their work is just, it's critical. And they are one of many that help make schools really successful teams. So, I did want to just pass along my thanks for the work that you all do, and the negotiations that occur, and allowing us to, as President Smith said, make you whole, move forward, and just express our gratitude for the work being done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And before we go to public comment, I think you have some important people in the audience who might soon be a part of this celebratory photo after the vote. But did you want to introduce who you have with you today?
Sure. We have a couple members of our negotiations team. We have our chief negotiator, Virginia Duran, or Virginia Durant, and then actual, the committee chair for the negotiations team, Sarah Morris, a school psychologist.
Thank you so much, Sarah. All right, JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
All right. Well, I'll bring it back to this body. Seeing no lights on, I will be looking for a motion to approve Item 4.03.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, wait. Did, oh, wait, we had two seconds over there. All right. I know Trustee Woodley is always a gentleman. So, I'm going to give the first to Trustee Nicolet. I will give the second to Trustee Westlake. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero, and now we will take a photo. Thank you. we will move forward slightly out of order with Item 4.06. This is the Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Update the Washoe County School District Legislative Platform for the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session and the 2025-2026 Biennium, including language that clarifies the district's support for a locally-controlled education system, continue and extend certain sources of educational funding, and legislative topics related to public education. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us, from Pinion Public Affairs, Principal at Pinion Public Affairs, Dylan Shaver, and then also, one of our strong team members that helps us legislatively, Tess Opferman. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board, Dylan Shaver and Tess Opferman from Pinion Public Affairs. Grateful to be here today. The superintendent has already shot me a look for going too slow, so I'm gonna jump right into the agenda. So, very, very quickly, I understand the constraints behind us today. We're just gonna hit, sort of, what are we doing here? I will highlight for you the changes that we made from previous iterations of the document. There's a couple of major topics we need to get into for today specifically. We'll take your feedback and answer any questions you might have. So, it occurred to me, I hadn't really sort of boiled this down for you in a way of sort of the practical application of this document, what actually we're going to use it for, why you keep having conversations about it. A platform, at the end of the day, a good one anyway, is a statement of your values and priorities. And when you approve it, what it does is it gives the superintendent the authority to make determinations on individual bills and issues as they come up before the state legislature, without having to come back to you during a meeting every other week. The legislature's only 17 weeks long. You'll meet seven, eight times in that period of time. So, this allows us the flexibility to have your blessing to make sort of bigger-picture decisions in Carson City. I've gone over before the characteristics of a good platform. The one that I want to pull out here is that, number two, is that it's out of the weeds, and number four, that it is clear. The direction that we can take from it is clear. Like any public-facing document, we want to make sure that anybody on the street can pick it up and read it and understand, oh, this is what WCSD is doing here. It's evolved a lot over the process. When we started, there was a very dense, sort of what I would call a government document. We started an evolution to sort of a, a more dynamic document with a, with a layout and everything with your last iteration. The, a lot of the tweaks you see today are going to push us further in that direction, also to make sort of the statements of our values and our needs from the legislature more succinct than they have been previously.
And if we could go back to that slide for my colleagues and then for the public, the reason why you don't see this paper is because all we are doing today is narrowing it down to topic and direction. This will be coming forward at least one or two more times, and then it will start looking the way this looks. But before we get to that, we have to dial into topic and direction. So, I don't want anybody thinking that this is the final decision. This is just that high-level look, again, topic and direction, and then the team will be working with the district staff, and we'll come back with something like this in the future. Just so everybody knows that this is just, it's not the beginning of the process, because as a reminder, we had a preliminary conversation in June where we were able to talk openly in a non-action item way. Then, we discussed the BDR in July. We recently approved that, and so now, we're just building on that with today's meeting.
And there you are. We took your feedback in, in June, as well as that from the superintendent and the leadership team, and sort of we're back for, we would hope to be your last update before you vote on a final product. That is, of course, up to you. So, starting big and working small, like I said, the platform's value statements, those take shape in form of the planks of individual platforms. We took a note from your bill draft request, the Excellence in Every Hire Act, and we shot for a little bit more dynamic language and made just some changes. Something that was... Something that was woven throughout the platform, that was sort of late-breaking, especially based on our feedback from you and some of the other sort of projects we've been doing this interim, is supporting our local communities. It does sort of get lost in the shuffle that education is connected by school districts, which are local entities that are representative of the communities that they serve, they elect you as representatives. And so it sort of embraces our role to sort of turn around and then support that community. We're creating, we continue to create space for students to thrive, advocate for smart strategic funding, and empower our personnel. And that instructors, school, social workers who are gone. So not them, for sure. School police, whomever. Under the planks, and while these aren't word for word, these are pretty comprehensive as to what we would propose to put in a final product, we want to emphasize local decision-making. That includes a component of the Excellence in Every Hire Act, where we're saying, you know, trust us as professionals on the ground in these communities to hire for needs that best fit our school. It also includes trusting our community to elect their own trustees. We know that there has been a push to make these appointive bodies. Also includes engaging our community with the citing of schools, right? We just got through a push and pull over what schools can go where at the Reno City Council, where the applicant didn't really even have to consult the community. And so we want to really emphasize that we support a locally-driven education system. Then we include under this plank, the call for universal pre-K and community wraparound services. You know, the instructors in our classrooms and educational personnel are being asked to perform a vast array of services that really belong to other government entities. And, you know, we're essentially saying, look, you got to invest in these kids so they can show up ready to learn, and we can focus on teaching them. Creating space for students to thrive. This is the least changed section. I think all of this language is ported directly from your previous iteration. We want to close the digital divide, we want to expand accelerated summer after-school learning opportunities. You know, we want to address equity issues, provide for SEL, and provide for well-being and safety. That in the context today is obviously, I think, on the front of everybody's mind. Empowering our personnel. You may recall the centerpiece of our previous platform was a 20% increase in base funding that we would then put towards enhancing the pay schedules for personnel. We, obviously, having gotten that done, sort of toned the language down a little bit, but we, obviously, we didn't want to send the message that we were turning our back on the idea of competitive pay. And then this, other than that particular sort of change of language, everything else remains the same. We want license or flexibility. We want to make sure that we can provide a safe and supportive workplace for our personnel. We want to be able to provide a lot of different routes for our workforce to grow. Smart strategic funding. There's a lot that fits into this. The most critical of it, of course, is funding to the legally mandated class sizes. We do want to make sure that the SB 231 funds that got, that came through the last legislative session, that those are ensconced somewhere so that we're not constantly sort of with our handout to the legislature saying, hey, you gave us the money to pay these folks to, you know. And of course, protect the revenue schools get and keep them in schools. And, you know, fund intelligently. There's no reason to cap the weights. Last session, we took a run at it, this session, you know, we have to keep in mind that the state funding pie is one whole, but we cannot stop continuing to advocate for them to do the right thing as it relates to these weights. And then, of course, just straightforward fiscal responsibility. There are any number of bills every legislative session that want us to prepare 1,000 different reports or can tell us where we can and can't close schools and those, I read your emails, and what those circumstances might look like. At the end of the day, you know, those sort of fall into both local control but also fiscal responsibility. Let us be responsible with the resources you send us, but also you have to be responsible as a legislature for what you're asking of us. So those were the planks, very briefly. Superintendent Ernst, I'm not sure I fit right into your timeline, but I'm close. And so there's two key topics that we wanted to pull out. One is testing time, which is inartful here, really evaluation and reporting time generally for whether it is, you know, the overlap between state and county assessments and the lack of interchangeability between them, whether it is the reams and reams and reams of reporting that the teachers have to prepare to go up to principals, that go up to deputy superintendents, that all get bound up and sent to NDE to sit on a shelf somewhere or what have you. You know, these analyses sort of live in this space. It's pulled out in its own plank because you can sort of see where that falls into every plank in this platform and sort of is an overarching theme of what we hear from you and from your personnel. The next topic is charter schools. I think I put 47 slides on this in here, and I'm going to summarize them as both neutrally and skillfully as I can. I apologize, however, if I fail to miss both of those marks. Charter schools intentionally operate under a different set of rules and laws than school districts. That is the stated goal of the law, that is why they exist. When the legislature created these in 1997, they did that so that school districts could look at those schools as a crucible and adopt lessons learned and best practices. The law since then has meandered from that concept in ways that have created essentially a two-track system for public education. And, you know, there's 1,000 other conversations that come in here as they relate to taxpayer accountability, to for-profit education management operators, to just the way they're allowed to staff their schools. But at the core of it is, we have created a two-lane system now. And there has been, I don't want to say a chorus, but there have been a lot of opinions from the staff and from folks sitting at this table today about the district's approach to that. Our recommendation specifically is, this should not change from superintendent to superintendent to superintendent, because when we go to the legislature every two years, we want to make sure that we are taking a consistent approach. And so we provide you a little bit of analysis in the board book today, as well as with some suggested language for how this can appear in the charter, specifically to take a stab at finding that consistent approach. We, as consultants from the outside, we do our best to pull in the arguments we hear from you and from your personnel. We run them by the superintendent and give you sort of what can pass for a reasonable recommendation. However, we understand that this is the kind of thing you hear a lot about from constituents and is hot-button for many people, and I don't want to bring you sort of a flaming, a flaming thing. So what we would advocate for, recommend in there, is really advocating for excellence for all students. We want to ensure taxpayer-funded educational opportunities follow consistent rules, standards, and oversight that demand the protection of public resources, discontinue the use of for-profit educational management operators, and that opportunities that may arise from charter schools be available to all students. This has three key components in it. The last one being, we want to make sure that if there are benefits to the rules they get, that all students have access to those benefits. And if there are no benefits to the sort of special set of rules in that second lane, that things are tightened up to protect both taxpayer resources and allow those kids the best opportunities they can get. It is important to note, and I'm sure one of you says it, so I'll say it for you, Washoe County School District remains the largest sponsor of charter schools in this community, sponsoring, I believe, 11 of the 18 that are here. I have not heard from anybody on this board or on staff that that's something that you would intend to walk away from. I want to make that very clear because I know the public is watching. But again, we are trying to find language that makes a very clear sort of where the district lands on these things. So I apologize to trustee Church for not making any more jokes this time. I was in an abbreviated period. When we talk about what your final product might look like, I included sort of the internal draft that we have there. Don't hold me to anything you see there, it's just a little more succinct than our last one, and we try and make it pretty and approachable for just anybody off the street to look at and understand. Phew, okay. Here's an unflattering picture of me and six other people. We are happy to hear your discussion and take any feedback or advice or requests you may have.
Thank you, President Smith. I missed the jokes, but it did make it go more quickly, so it works fine. I'm going to hesitate a little bit to bring up this subject. I'm looking at our superintendent, our president, and our general counsel, because if I cross the line, pull me back, totally fine. When we talk about charter schools and we talk about excellence for all students, I will share a topic that has come up for me, and it's WC1 funds. And I'll be straight with you, I am not quite sure how to address that when others from charter schools, parents, et cetera, bring up the WC1 funds and why they do not have access, and that is WCSD-sponsored charter schools. I really don't know what to say, because I didn't understand exactly how the mechanism worked when it first came to the commission and then how it was passed. I know we worked hard to pass it, but what in that passage excludes our 11 charter schools from accessing those dollars?
If it's okay, I had that exact same question, and I got a first-level answer. I would love for other people to jump in, but I had that exact same question. And what I learned when I asked that question is that we are the sponsor of those schools, but we're not necessarily the entity that oversees them. So as a reminder, they all have their own individual boards that oversee them. So we're in a sponsor capacity, but they're not actually part of the oversight of the district. The second part, which is critically important, is that those assets are privately-held assets. That would be taking the public funding from WC1, and ultimately, those schools own them in a private capacity. They're not for public use. So voting doesn't happen there, Cub Scouts don't happen there. Those are privately-held assets. They are not public assets owned by the community the way that our schools are. That's the first-level answer that I got. And I'll be honest, most people were pretty happy with that once they understood that charter schools own those assets privately and not necessarily for public use, which is different than the portfolio of schools in our group. I'm not suggesting that's the end to the answer, but I will tell you that when I ask that and when I answer that, people feel a little bit more clear about that.
Thank you, and I would have to say that I didn't understand that privately-public, I need more help.
Yes, because charter schools are publicly funded, but their assets are privately held. It's very unique. And that's, it's normal for it to be confusing for most people, because it's not like you go to a Reno fire department and then see a private fire department funded by our tax dollars right next door to it. But you see that in these capacities, and so that is important, that it is absolutely true that charter schools are public schools, but it's important to understand that they are publicly funded and yet privately-held assets, which is very unique in government. And I think I cut off our chief legal counsel and also our public affairs.
I'm going to trump your legal counsel, just to give him a break, but I helped write and helped run the campaign for that particular ballot question. And even in the phrasing of the question, uses outside of capital projects of the Washoe County School District would be disallowed. The question specifically put to voters was, shall the Board of County Commissioners be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of 0.54% in the county to fund only capital projects of Washoe County School District? And so going outside of something that would be, that would, even if this board wanted to, I am not entirely certain that you would be able to.
And thank you for that. And that was the other part of the discussion that I held with this group of people, and I was caught off guard, but that's okay, and that's why I'm asking, so I can learn. The comeback on exactly what you said was, yes, but we are Washoe County School District schools because we are sponsored by Washoe County School District. Now, that public-funded versus privately-held assets, I'm going to still wrap my mind around that, because I'm getting that, I'm getting that. So the fact that our 11 sites are Washoe County School District-sponsored schools does not equate to they are Washoe County School District schools entitled to the WC1 dollars. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I don't see any lights on, and I do have something that I want to bring up, but it's more for an item for consideration and action, so I'd like to do that on the other side of public comment. Do you have a question or clarification?
Yeah, a lot of questions, yes.
Go for it. Well, let's start with the questions if we can, then we're going to go to public comment, and then we can come back for items that maybe we want the board to consider changes on, that kind of thing. But go ahead, trustee Church.
Well, it's more comments, so I guess if you want to do it that way, I'll have to wait.
I mean, we could do it really anyway, it's just it's good to get the clarifications, hear from the public, and then we can come back with what we think now that we've heard from the public. Because I have something that I'd like to consider us to ask, but I wouldn't do that until the other side of public comment.
Mine would probably be better now, because, you know, my statements really are throwing out for discussion or response.
Go for it.
Number one on school choice, good discussion, we've had many board members that say they're in favor of it. The way that charter one is written, to me, is like a poison pill. If we said, well, we have concerns about for-profit, and it there, and we just can't discuss it today, there's just not enough time. I mean, this is, symposiums are held on this issue that last weekends or weeks. The idea of the charters, in my mind, is go forth and prosper, you're not subject to our regulations, that's the intent. You make it work. Student success is the goal, and you are not under our thumb, and you are, don't, you know, for example, doer-dunkler has to follow restorative credit, restorative discipline, credit recovery, and if they want to do it a different way, if they want to teach their share program differently, no parent has to send their kid to the charter school. So that's a real poison pill in what I'm hearing today. And then I'll move on to, what I do totally agree with is the unfunded mandates, if you want to even comment on that. I call it the three Rs. I think the first thing we need to do is repeal, correction, review, repeal, or replace. Before we start adding more, we need to go back and get rid of, I just read the NRS on the gangs, it's like, why do we need that in NRS? We do it. It's just burdensome to create an unfunded mandate on us. And if you'll go back to page 10, competitive pay, safe and supportive workplaces, that gets right into my criticism of restorative discipline, safe and supportive. I just don't believe they're compatible, personally. I think restorative discipline is, needs to go back to the drawing board. Under competitive pay, I would argue, and I've been a government employee, so I know, it's not just money, it can be housing, affordable housing, that we're going to create a program for affordable housing. So just in my mind, my personal opinion, if we look at competitive pay, in our brains, we include anything that helps recruit and retain staff. And affordable housing is just one idea. It may be better pension benefits, it may be better medical benefits for the family. So pay, just in our minds, I would argue, doesn't necessarily mean cash money in the paycheck. And I think that kind of sums up, but thank you for letting me get that in there. But yeah, the charter school issue is really, for me, it's kind of a poison pill in here.
Absolutely. I'm going to go to public comment, and then I'll come back and lead us off. Do we have any public comment on this?
The board received an email from Kalen Evans.
Okay. So I'm going to bring it back here. So we've got this, this platform, I am- I am going to, in a moment, bring up one item that I'd like to see added in the list of local decision-making. But we have had the meeting in June and the meeting in July, and all that discussion we've had ultimately created these topics and specific areas that we'd like to see written in, certainly not the finished document. As a gentle reminder, this is the legislative platform for 2025, so it's important to remember who is gonna be moving forward in that capacity, and then what the board wants for its topics and areas of focus, and then also what the voters are interested in as well, too, in the leadership of our district. So with that said, the way that we make changes to this is by individual motion. We may be very happy because, again, Dylan and Tess and superintendent Ernst went back and listened to all of the previous meetings. I did as well, too, because we have a very important person missing, and that's Vice President Mayberry. So I do want everybody to know that I re-watched the June and July and August items, and I spoke with trustee Mayberry. Certainly, I cannot make a vote for him, but I can assure you that he has read this and that he's comfortable with the topics that are there, okay? So that way, he's not missing. Also, Vice President Mayberry is expected to participate in all the future meetings before we even land on a final, but I did just want to acknowledge that. So the one thing I'd like to bring up to my colleagues is in the list on Slide 8 under local decision-making, where it says, we have like a whole list of things, electing their own trustees. I would like to suggest to my colleagues, and I will make a motion to include trustee compensation on that. I do think that that should be a locally-held decision. At the very least, I think trustee compensation is something that needs to change, and the reason is, is that I'm a believer that the compensation that we receive right now is exclusionary to the public being able to serve on this governing body. A couple of weeks ago, or maybe was it last week, I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Clark's government classes at Reno High School. One of the most common questions that came up in every single one of those classes was, how much money do you get paid for the work that you do? So I always answer that by answering questions or asking the question back, what do you think that I make? And I always frame it, what do you think it's worth for people to be making these decisions and to be involved? And so I heard 85,000, 90,000, 100,000, and I told all of them that we make $750 a month. And the one, the first young man that asked me that question said, we value so little, it's that little, they value that so little. And I was like, well, I don't know if they see it like that, but I do want the public to know that this isn't just about increasing our compensation. I don't know what the answer is. I've heard great ideas around maybe anchoring trustee compensation to starting teacher salaries, among other things, but I will tell you that you have to have a degree of privilege to serve at this dais. For $750 a month, we are not getting single parents who want to serve their communities and feed their families. So you have to have the privilege of being independently wealthy. You have to have the privilege of being retired and have a pension or a retirement that can pay for you. You have to have a partner in your life that is willing to pay you. Have to work full-time and have a job that is willing to spare this much of your time. And that means we are excluding huge portions of our valuable community. I want voices from underrepresented communities at this dais, and they cannot feed their families, and they cannot contribute to the decision-making ultimately in this governing body for $750 a month. And so for that reason, if anybody wants to jump in, I am gonna make the motion to include just simply trustee compensation. And again, not setting what it should be, but I do think it's something that we have to start raising at some level about what it is that we make and the value of what we provide to our community. That's my soapbox.
Thank you, Madam President. That's definitely something I can get behind as well. I recall a former trustee used to serve here not that long ago, and he needed to, one of the things was that he had the insurance through our district, and at the end of, you know, the compensation of the month, he was walking away with less than $200. And I do know that we do a lot of work, and that's definitely something I can get behind, and I could look myself in the mirror and know that we are valued, for sure. So I do support that, President Smith.
Thank you, President Smith. I just know personally, I ended up having to quit my job because this was taking up so much of my time, and so I retired three years then before than I planned. But I never thought of it in terms of what you put. I mean, that was a sacrifice I was willing to make, but I never thought of, you know, I'm 62. I mean, a young person, a young-minded person, you know, really on fire to serve their community and just having a new, fresh ideas, there's no way that they could do this. I mean, I don't think they, I wouldn't see it, I wouldn't see it happening, and I don't think we've ever had someone like that, you know, a young person wanting to jump in and serve. And in fact, I tell, I tell a lot of young people when they ask me about this, and I talk to them, and I tell them how fulfilling it is, and it's, I said, it's so important to serve, but I always, now I'm thinking back on these conversations, I always say, but you know, you're gonna have to wait until you're retiring and you can do this as like your full-time job, and you're not dependent on the financial reimbursement. And I said, but it's important to do it at any time in your life, but it would be exciting to have young people be able to do it, too, with their fresh ideas. So I love that perspective.
I appreciate that. I view, I understand that maybe once upon a time, the intention for $750 a month was meant to be humble, but I will tell you, in a modern lens, I find it to be exclusionary. Trustee Woodley? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your line on trustee Church.
We agreed. Thank you. Yeah, I actually agree 100%. I just looked up the minimum wage, even if they paid us minimum wage, and this is truly a full-time job, $2,000 a month, minimum wage. And nobody, I don't think McDonald's or anybody pays $12 an hour. The, if you look at Transparent Nevada, and you look at the school, correction, the Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, I think they're making anywhere from 80,000 to 150,000 a year, and we're not seeking that. And we are the biggest government agency in Washoe County. We are the biggest budget, not trying to show off to the others, but we are. And yet, yeah, I don't even, I don't even have an office. I have a little thing where I check my mail, you know, and, yeah, so I can get behind that 100% that it just, people can't afford to be, you know. And I would argue with due respect, and I love Mineral County, where I'm kind of from and my wife's from, that's a whole different animal. You know, they, it's one little town with one little school each, and they don't, it's not a full-time job probably for them, but it is here with over a billion-dollar budget. So, yeah, count me in.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree as well. I'm not gonna say the state the same, but I will say, just in one of our collateral duties, I know that I'm privileged because my job allows me to take eight days of vacation for required meetings that I have for NI double labor. That alone, I know 20 years ago, I couldn't afford to take a week's vacation, use it up for meetings. So definitely, I think we are excluding a lot of great candidates that are out there. And I know they exist because I've had individuals tell me there was no way I would do that for that.
Thank you. I am for the local control concept. I am not for increasing our pay. I would prefer that that money go to the classrooms. I've struggled with this notion since I began to serve, and I cannot support it. What I can support is a look at local control. And I will tell you that our colleagues in the smaller school districts, they do not have the luxuries that we have. One of them is sitting right next to me, to my left, our general counsel. And the depth and breadth of the professional help that we receive, our smaller school districts do not have that luxury. And so therefore, let us never think that we do more. We do differently in our 17 school districts. I will say it again, I appreciate the local control, and for me personally, I would rather see the dollars in Washoe County not go to me. I would rather see it go to the classrooms. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And with that in mind, I would not set in my motion that we set how much money we should make, only that it be included in the local control. So before I make the motion, I know we did a lot of talking. I want to give you the opportunity, and then I'll go ahead and make a motion for the inclusion of that.
I have just sort of a statement, sort of a little bit of analysis, and then I've got some language that I've, hopefully, I can get trustee Nicolette on board for, but it'll be up to her. First, I don't think I have to tell you that it's very sort of, you're stepping out there politically, and that is a challenge that if you believe in it, we will go there with you. Trustee Nicolette does raise a point, though, that with including this, you are going to, you will have done it. And so if it is important to all of you that it be in there, then that's our value. But just be aware that public elected official compensation is often a third rail, and the reason it hasn't changed is because ultimately, I think that elected officials are reluctant to advocate for themselves in front of their constituents beyond vote for me. And so this sort of adds another layer, and if it is a challenge you are willing to take on, then we will take it on with you. The language we'd recommend to do that, so we see there, trusting our community to elect their own trustees, and we would add to that and determine how best to compensate them. This, again, just makes very clear, this isn't something that should be decided at the state legislative level, nor should, just like what council member Reese on the Reno City Council makes should not be decided by the state legislature, just like Mr. Rodriguez in his other capacity should not be decided by the state legislature and so forth. So, although you are now. So that was a bad example, but this would sort of just put school districts and school trustees in the same place as any other sort of locally-elected or appointed official.
And that's why I'm okay with it, because I would not be okay with suggesting how much trustees should make. I believe it should be a local decision. I do know it's the third rail for others, but we make $750 a month, so I don't think they're gonna make it go much lower than that, or I don't think that that would be much of a difference to us. So my interest is in the local control. I think you have to start somewhere, and I will give everybody this. I get this question all the time. How, like, there is a lot of support and admiration for our board. I'm really, really proud of that. People ask all the time, how do we get more people like the colleagues you have here at this dais serving? I tell them the number-one thing is that we have to be able to compensate this work appropriately. So again, I am not suggesting we set a dollar amount, but rather that we advocate for local control. Somebody has to be out there, and people understand all the time. I would like to see single parents from underrepresented communities serving on these governing boards, and you cannot do that for $750 a month. So for me personally, it's an exclusionary privilege, but I do think it should fall under local control, but I am not foolish enough to set a dollar value to it. So on that note, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. Now, remember, before I make this motion, this is just to include the topic. As you draft the platform, you'll decide what the phrasing is. This is just to include the topic somewhere in the legislative platform, but I'm not setting what that would be. So I move to include in local decision-making for our 2025 legislative platform to include a statement that allows the board or community to determine how best to compensate trustees. All right, so we have a motion by me, President Smith. I have a second by trustee Westlake. I see lights on, so we'll start with trustee Church and then go to clerk Rodriguez.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor. Quickly, normally, when I see that done, it normally effective 2028 or something, so that after people are turned out, that's generally the way it's done, but we don't have to put that in there. Quick question, aside from your really good haircut, what's that last word under local decision-making?
School citing, where one places.
Citing, oh, okay, okay, got it, got it. You tricked me. I thought you missed a T or something.
And by the way, we're gonna have another motion to pass the whole shebang. This is just for the one inclusion because it's not there.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just kind of, I want to appreciate where trustee Nicolette's coming from. I definitely hear what she's saying, but I would also like to remind the community, and it's kind of just, a lot of the work that we've done over the several years, the school budget shortages, teacher salaries, going out there advocating, testifying to our legislators, like we've, I truly click ourselves in the mirror, we have put a lot into the classrooms, we've put a lot into our buses, we're, we've done a lot. And to kind of just piggyback off what you're saying, President Smith, like, people are saying like, man, you're doing the Lord's work. And we put up with, we get a lot from our communities, both positive and negative, and, you know, to, I can remember one of my colleagues saying like, you know, doing that for 700 bucks? That's crazy, you know? And even trustee Church stating that, you know, kids at McDonald's are making more than we are. And we're making policies and, you know, large budgets for below minimum wage, you know? I think that's something to be said, so. I just want to, I hear what trustee Nicolette's saying, and to agree, I hear, I agree, but we've done a lot, and we've put a lot into these classrooms.
Thank you. And if the legislature is interested in more boards like ours, this is one of our recommendations on how you get that done. Trustee Nicolette?
Couple of things, thank you. So we're looking at a request to change the NRS, because it is in NRS, what is, I'm not, I tried to look it up real quick, 386. Thank you, 386.32. So my reference was very valid, thank you very much. And so that would have to be our attack. Second point, serving on the legislative committee, I'm the chair for Nevada Association of School Boards. Much like we were able to successfully increase teacher compensation in SB 231, which we hope will continue, I believe that our best approach to local control is throughout the 17 school districts. And that is something that I think that I could personally move forward as long as we stay with the local control concept, and then I can fight it later if I need to. So, again, the NRS, that is something that we would have to be willing to tackle, find our champions, you know that. And then, is there any way we can, this is a stretch, approach it through the funding You don't need to answer now, but I just, I can't help but wonder.
So there would be a lot of different ways to approach it. I would clarify, however, that this board selected its bill draft. We do our best to find and support or encourage the introduction of bills that do the other things in your platform, and so while it would require a change to 386, like Mr. Rimbardo said, the, any number of things can happen after that. And so we'd sort of take an opportunistic approach. We certainly don't take this as direction from you to go out and get us paid so much as start telling this story as, and frankly, to tell it in a way that President Smith, trustee Westlake, and others sort of emphasize that, like, what you've got is an equity issue at some point, unless somebody is at a place where they are like me, where they are paid to be here, or where they have some external support mechanism to allow them to be here. You know, they're sort of excluded from this service. We'd start telling the story, and kind of after a little bit, you remember, a lot of these topics from your platform have been in for a while. So we, like I said, I guess I'm sort of being very long-winded on this, we would be opportunistic, we'd see where the opportunities were and push it when they came up about as far as we could, but I don't take anything in here as prescriptive as to the how or the tactics or even... or even what legal change would get it done. It's just, this is something that the trustees here value.
And so I would say you got to start somewhere. And I have not seen anybody be willing to put this down. And I'm going to now call for a vote and see if that's going to be the Washoe County School District. So all those in favor of the inclusion under local control for trustee compensation, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries six to zero. And now we see the dominoes pushed. Okay, colleagues, so we're going to bring this conversation back, certainly open to any other changes or inclusions we want to see. Otherwise, we have a motion in front of us to approve the platform with the inclusions. Trustee clerk Rodriguez, followed by trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, just got a call from work. Pardon me, it was under the slide with safety, safe as a part of workplaces. This might be appropriate place to talk about NRS. So I know NRS 289.190 states school police officers, and basically states that they're a limited jurisdiction agency. So basically, I'm sure a lot of us know, but for those that don't know, basically, it just limits our police officers have authority on school property with a few exceptions. One of the things that I know, just from a while back by patrol when I was younger, that our school police is actually the largest day shift agency, more so than Reno even. So we actually have a lot of officers out there. And given that they are a specialized type agency and officers, I know that, like Washoe County and Reno, a lot of times when there's issues or, you know, basically barriers, what have you, with our juveniles that are going to and from school, it's awfully convoluted as to who's responsible for the safety of those children to and from school, things of that nature. So this would be a place where I'd like to see, you know, and I've always had this mindset, you're either a police officer or you're not, you're a law enforcement officer or you're not. So this would be a place where I would like to see maybe have that removed. And honestly, I don't think that'd be a fiscal note or anything like that. Honestly, I think it'd just be some language cleanup. Leave that to my colleagues out there to see what their thoughts are or.
So for that, so this would be under empower our personnel, and which one of these? The safe and supportive workplaces or the workforce development?
Yes. Yeah, so staying, you know, I'll just kind of be candid here. You know, students are making threats off of school property. You know, now I'll just be honest, I know a lot of our agency out there, they're stretched thin, but this is also what our officers do on a daily basis. You know, so even though that threat's made off of school property, that would fall in jurisdiction, whatever that student's living, whether it's Sparks, Reno, or the county. And I do believe this is where our officers, we have the manpower, things of that nature, to look at enforcement that, investigating it. Whereas, you know, maybe detective with Reno or something like that, you know, I don't want to say it will fall to the bottom, but it's more of a priority to us, if that makes sense. It may not be a threat to school, but, you know, threats of violence, things of that nature, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So then, definitely go ahead, trustee Woodley, but what I'm hearing is that we may have an inclusion to the empower our personnel to offer full recognition of school police officers on.
Yes. So basically, we're limited jurisdiction. I would like to see about removing us from under that.
Okay. I'm going to have trustee Woodley go, and then I'm going to wordsmith that.
Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to, just to tack on to what trustee Rodriguez is stating. Not only that, but they also have the intel that the other agencies don't have. And I know what he's talking about, because we've had situations where we've had parentstrated with incidences with kids, and then once it's off campus, it's a jurisdictional issue. So now it goes over to the other agencies. One of the other three agencies that, as stated previously, they do have priorities as well. I mean, truth be told, you know, active homicide that you're working compared to an accusation that a student made a threat via social media is very different in comparison of priorities. So that's something that we are always dealing with, that, for lack of a better term, that challenge of competing for the attention of priorities. So it is definitely a priority for us if we hear a threat. But when you see what the other agencies are dealing with on a regular basis, it will not reach to that level of whatever it is that they're addressing at the time. So I can see how helpful it would be to remove that restricted jurisdiction, to give them the ability to continue to address the situation, dealing with our students, but it just didn't happen on site. Because the thing is, if it happens right across the street, we're done, you know. So that's, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
So we'll go to trustee Nicolette, but what I'm thinking is that, and again, these are just topics for inclusion, so we don't have to worry about wordsmithing it. We would just potentially, or have clerk Rodriguez potentially make a motion for something as simple as to remove school police departments from the limited jurisdiction designation. Because again, remember, we're not wordsmithing it right now. We're just providing the direction on high-level topics that would be nestled within some of these other sections. Trustee Nicolette?
Thank you. I think you probably already know that every semester I do a police ride-along and learn so much with every ride. Every ride is unique. And so I've been in this situation where I've watched our officers, our truancy officers, attendance officers, have to deal with some things when they're off property. So my real thought is this. This is not my area of expertise. And I would prefer personally that we ensure that this topic is something that our Washoe County School District Police Department Chief and staff are comfortable with. I don't know for a fact that they would want this to happen. They might, they might not. I prefer, before we start charging opinion with this work, that I at least would like a better handle on chief, et cetera, going, yes, this would be awesome. I don't know what the outcome would be with the question.
May I chime in? Yeah, I can totally support this, given our officers' full peace officer powers. I know Chief Moore's not here, but it doesn't say that they have to go off campus, but if there is an incident, we had the incident with, you know, kids shoplifting at the grocery store, where it would be nice maybe to have an officer be able to be there and intercede if needed, but at the chief's discretion. It's not like you will do it, it's that you may do it. So yeah, I'm totally supportive. I think the best terminology is probably full peace officer powers. That's my opinion.
Thank you. And trustee Nicolette, I hear what you're saying. And this is also, I do believe this is where there are supervisors, you know, this is, you know, your concern should be addressed by, you know, the department's policies and things of that nature, like actions you will do on and off. And again, this is, again, just providing stronger, better service to protecting our schools, because this goes beyond the school walls. And as our department, we've all increased our school police department, we're hopefully, Chief Moore, we're hiring people. So this is something that I think could be addressed. And it's just, it's really real, you know, these threats come off school property, they're not always on here. And I hate to say it, like, trustworthy, this stuff can fall to the wayside on a case load from a detective.
May I? Absolutely. I really understand the concept, and thank you for this. I take it to this next level. Our police officers, highly trained, want to get involved. I'm just going to assume they want to get involved. They have the training to be involved. It seems to me there's another element of cooperative agencies that have to be on board with each other, that, okay, Officer Nicolette, Washoe County School District, and I'm looking at a Reno PD, and now we have a collective understanding of our roles, and that would be extremely important.
That would be great. Honestly, that's not happening. From a standpoint, like, you know, kids are getting in a fight down the street, you know, at the Burger King, you know. Washoe always thinks, oh, that's school PD. And school PD says, no, that's not our jurisdiction. And they're like, well, what do you guys do? I mean, literally, it's, this happens a lot. So, and I think that's where we can bridge that gap.
I think I have, like, because again, I mean, here's where I kind of land on this. Obviously, it's very important what our school police thinks, but we as a governing body also get to state our intentionality for where we'd like things to go in the state. I kind of have an idea. Remember, this is just a motion that would include this in addition to other things that we have too. But I think I maybe have one in my head. Trustee Westlake, did you have a point or a clarification on this?
A little bit, looking at it a little bit differently, just from feedback that I've gotten from community members. I think this would do a lot to give our community some feeling they have a little bit of a safety net there, because it seems like what I hear most often is, well, why aren't you involved in this? Why isn't the school police doing something about this? This started at school. And most of these things do start at school, and then they carry on other places. And it's like, well, you know, out of sight, out of mind. But I think from what I get from parents, grandparents, business people that I've talked to, is like, our police have a better understanding of what's going on because they were there at the ground level as these incidents are escalating. And maybe if our school police could be involved along every step, it won't get to the most drastic final result. We can turn it around, because, like you said, we do have the knowledge of what these kids are going through in school, maybe bullying, maybe not having a supportive family life. And so who better to be involved through the whole process than our school police? And they would have access directly then to our school psychologist, talking to the teachers. I just think our public would feel safer and that we were more on top of providing safety for these kids.
Madam President, if I may, having heard this conversation and had a little bit of sidebar with my colleague here, we believe that we can actually include this in what we bring back to you without a separate motion. We believe that providing tools for maintaining safe learning environments gives us a pretty wide swath, and we can just sort of make that language a little more clear after talking to Chief Moore, and come back to you with something for final approval.
Fantastic. Okay. So then I'll bring it back to this body. We've had some great conversation, you know, and so we've all had the opportunity to talk to a certain degree, so we could entertain a motion or other individual changes.
Yeah, I don't think I have the votes, two more votes to discuss the charter schools. So unfortunately, that's a poison pill. I'll vote no. But just verbally, I support all the other stuff. Thank you.
I know. I mean, and you're right, absolutely, you know, place the vote that you're interested in. I will just point out that this is the 2025 legislative platform, and there's a lot of consensus around that. That is also one of the areas that Vice President Mayberry brought up very specifically in June. 100% vote your conscience. I know that's been advice to our other governing bodies, but something to consider is that this is going to be the legislative platform for going forward. So with that said, we've had great conversation. We do have a motion in front of us. It would be amended to read, I move that the Board of Trustees provide direction in addition to changes made during this item related to the 2025-2026 Washoe County School District legislative platform.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by trustee Westlake and a second by trustee Woodley. And seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Opposed, nay.
All right, motion carries five to one. Thank you so much, colleagues. All right, that closes item 4.6. And thank you so much, Tess and Dylan. We really appreciate you. And that brings us to about 3:53. And in conversation with Superintendent Ernst, we will go ahead and move forward now with item 4.05. This is the presentation and discussion on the entry plan for Joe Ernst, Superintendent of Schools for the Washoe County School District, for presentation and discussion only. And as a reminder to everyone, this will be the last item in this section, and we will move on to our next section after this.
Thank you, everyone. And just as an aside, I just want you to know how much I appreciate all the work that you are doing and understand your perspective, and just wanted you to know that we appreciate your service to Washoe County School District and our community. I'll move through our superintendent entry plan. Thank you, JJ. Really, it's based on three core values, and that's commitment to our community, achieving academic excellence, and pursuing goals with integrity and transparency. You can also see down in the right-hand corner a firm belief that we hold as a school district. I'll jump into the timeline and the phases. So entry plan outcomes, bringing this forward to all of you today, providing a mid-year summary on January 28, and then a larger summary at our State of Education. Throughout, there are continuous opportunities for feedback and collaboration. And what we're proud of is that we are really developing thorough evaluations of strategic plan initiatives. I do want to back this out for a moment, though, and I want to make sure that I'm acknowledging our leadership team. I understand that this is our superintendent entry plan, and happy to share that. I also want everybody to know the importance that we rely on our team. And our team has very much contributed to much of the thinking around our entry plan. You can see that we started in ambitiously in July, maybe even in June. And we center the phases on hope. We moved to the second phase, which is centering on excellence. And then third, centering on reflection. Right now, we're really working on listening, learning, and strengthening relationships. I'll talk more about that as we move forward. We'll continue to analyze leading indicators on progress that is being made. As we look at Phase One, centering on hope, we are talking about strengthening those relationships. And I can tell you, it's been a tremendous opportunity as an ambassador of Washoe County School District to meet with so many community partners. And that includes some of those outreach efforts, visiting from teachers to principal-focused groups, teacher-focused groups, department walkthroughs. I've had a chance to meet with state legislators, the mayors of both cities, just continuing to work with our higher ed partners at all levels, and then looking at other community partners, communities and schools, children's cabinet, continuing to work with our tribal leaders. And so it's really been a rewarding experience to have a chance to meet with so many community partners so willing to invest in education. And then always working on strengthening collaboration amongst our trustees, our associations. Centering going forward on Phase Two, we're really emphasizing operational excellence. And in my superintendent reports in just a bit, we'll talk about that relative to some of the emergency efforts that have occurred. Really, right here, you can see that we are really focusing quite a bit on chronic absenteeism. We know that we'll be going into that more in depth at our next board meeting, so we'll save that. I want to thank Dr. Lamarcas and our associate chiefs for all of the work that's being done on a very arduous problem, and something that we are really working to aggressively strategize and work towards improve, because we really believe it to be a cornerstone in improving our academic outcomes. Phase Three, we're going to look at making sure that we're recognizing our successes. I think it's important for us to do that. We'll acknowledge where we have to get better on. And I know as a leader of our leadership team that we all acknowledge that, and we'll continue to reflect, refine, and work to get better. And then we'll continue to report on the strategic plan throughout the year. I think our first strategic plan reporting will come on October 22. Thank you to Dr. Davidson, her leadership on really developing an outstanding template that will help all of us more easily access a large breadth of information. And then I really like the quote here, "When we strive to become better than we are, everything around us becomes better too." And I know that we embrace that as a team, and just want to say thank you, team, for being here at this point. Then I look at Phase Three, and that's going to be centering on reflection, as we just discussed. Progress to date, I think it's important. Really have asked Um, really have asked our leadership team to identify specific areas that we can ensure progress on during incremental phases throughout the year. We started with what we can make progress on in September. We'll look at January and then we'll look at the end of the year. And what I can tell you about our leadership team is we have a committed group of leaders that when we say that we're going to do something, we're committed to doing it and we're committed to doing it together. And that's critical in what we're doing. So you can see that we've developed comprehensive focus groups. One of the, some of the most rewarding is just simply going to departments and meeting with staff. Uh, uh, something that's interesting to share is that in meeting with staff, it's amazing the size of our organization and I'm reluctant to share, but there's times where I'm putting names and faces together, uh, and I've been in this district for plenty of time. And, uh, but I think it's important that we do get to know each other, uh, in better ways rather than that email exchange. And so I can tell you with every opportunity, I've been working to introduce myself and, uh, again, uh, reluctant to say, that goes as far as a building right here. And so I think that's important. I've connected with many diverse community members to gather input, strengthen relationships. And then something that we're going to institute starting in a couple of weeks is a cup of joe with joe. And so this is going to be, I give a lot of credit to some of our outstanding team members that come up with a lot of creative thinking. And, uh, this is just a chance to sit with our teachers and our staff, to listen to them. Uh, it's really open forum, not coming with a set of questions, but giving an opportunity for our staff to sit down in a busy day to try to just pause for a moment and hear more directly from them around progress, concerns, ideas. I really believe that the front lines are where we gather great ideas and so this is part of that. I know that, uh, our chief human resources officer had to step out, but we have made such significant progress on classroom vacancy. This is a celebration that cannot be understated, um, what we looked at at start of the school year to what we have now. And then from what we saw today, uh, when I talk about superintendent's reports, without the progress that was made here on staffing vacancies, I'm not sure we could have taken the report, the, the approach that we did today with opening 90% of our schools. And that's something that's really, uh, important for us to connect how important it is to have staffing. We are continually working to increase security measures. Again, I'm going to talk a bit more about that in the superintendent's, uh, report at the end of the meeting. Um, I'm appreciative of Chief Moore and his leadership to build, uh, tremendous bridges with law enforcement and our community agencies. Um, it is evident how, what an outstanding job he does in collaborating with all of our agencies. And I know that we're really fortunate because you can see our emphasis on pedestrian safety and you could see our law enforcement partners out in force on the first day of school, supporting us and working to, uh, understand that we do this as a community. And then the communication and I'll recognize, um, Adam Cersey and his work. Again, our associate chiefs, I want everyone to understand and I know you do, they helped bring so much of this together. And so this has been a critical effort. When I look at family engagement, this has really been an important endeavor and I'm proud to say that great progress is made because it is so important that we're making sure that our students are fed. Uh, we, again, will go into more, uh, detail. I'm looking forward to Dr. Lamarcas and Associate Chief presentation on our plan to decrease chronic absenteeism. Uh, we continue to develop, uh, CTE, student advisories and sixth grade athletics is moving forward just about as we speak. So that's near and dear to my heart. Um, the monitoring of leading indicators is something that we're really trying to improve on. We don't want to get to the end and find out that maybe we weren't making the progress that we were. And so this is something that is a challenge, but something that we've identified as important to monitor the progress as we're going forward. And then of course, I know that Jen Van Tress is out there, the expansion of, uh, our early childhood program, uh, the hub out at Cold Springs Middle School. And so I'm grateful and again, what I really want to impress upon is while I've identified leaders, the cross collaboration is what makes it happen. And so when we look at that, we have to look at the transportation and what that looks like and, um, I'm pleased and I've talked to our leadership team recently about the cross collaboration that's occurring and moreover, without direction, the cross collaboration that they are identifying as needs and then moving forward that with urgency. And so I think that that's important. And then we've talked here about our bill draft resolution and today, a little bit more about our legislative platform. So while it's an entry plan, what I want to be, uh, hopefully, uh, clear is, uh, we're moving with as much urgency as we can to make what we identify as potential improvements and we're going to always build on strengths to reach farther for those improvements. So looking ahead, I do think our future is bright. Uh, it's been just a tremendous honor to lead this, uh, school district and, uh, and so I'll talk about, you can see the four, and strengthening organizational culture. We've talked about this as a group. Culture is something that you can feel, something, culture is an advantage that can lead to substantial improvement. And we're really working to attend to culture in more explicit ways so that we can really grow culture. Culture's not an accident and we're keeping that at the forefront of our thinking, designing professional learning around that and really recognizing, we do base that culture on what we've identified as 10 guiding principles, um, that we've shared with principals, that we share, that we reflect on as a leadership team, on how we are doing around these guiding principles and how that's contributing to the strengthening of our culture and perhaps where we might be able to grow. Engagement is, um, gigantic and that's not just from a student level, that's from an employee level as well. Achievement, as I've stated many times, and it's a large system. Um, but I know we're determined to improve academic outcomes and I see that determination in our team, uh, that's here today, uh, and even some that may not be. And we are really determined to improve academic outcomes. And then everything's about putting the strategic plan to action and, and we've really been able to align resources to that. We'll continue to broaden our thinking around what the strategic plan offers and where there are additional areas that are high leverage of which we can consider resource allocation to continue to strengthen what are maybe some of the pieces that maybe aren't as identified in the plan. And I think that's important that we continue to broaden that. You can see what the goals are. We've talked about those, safety and belongings, everything. I'll talk about that more in the superintendent's highlights, our pillars, and then I want to take that to quality of learner. And this is something that's really important. We aim to cultivate these qualities in every student. Yes, we are working to improve academic outcomes and we know in talking with our community partners that these qualities of learners are front and center of what our employers want in our community. And so while we work to make the improvements in academic outcomes, we cannot lose weight and we have to be careful about being overly discreet in learning outcomes and make sure that we are not becoming too specific, that we're not getting to what are really important qualities that we want everyone. So you hear that we call it qualities of a WCSD learner. Sometimes we'd heard it portrait of a grad, portrait of a learner, but this is, we're, we're calling it qualities of a WCSD learner because when our school, our kids graduate, this is what we want them to be able to do going forward. This is something I'll close with, together we'll create a brighter future for every student and alone we can do so little, together we can do so much. I thank the team for being here today. Uh, it's an honor to work with you and that's where we're at on the entry plan.
I think it's phenomenal and you very diplomatically left off managing the seven of us. And the phone calls and texts you get from us. I think this is wonderful. Oh my goodness. I mean, there is a reason why all seven of us, I will speak for Vice President Mayberry, even though he's not here, there is a reason why all of us, as different as we are from the way we think, the perspectives we have, the values we carry, one thing, we unanimously knew that you were the next leader of the Washoe County School District and this plan reflects that and the fact that you have all these leaders looking out at you in support is a clear demonstration to Washoe County and the state of Nevada that you are the chosen leader for our community. I think this is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Smith. I, I appreciate that, but it's, uh, we are the leaders and I really mean that. And then I didn't get a chance to say thank you to Michelle Anderson for putting, putting all of this together, being so patient with me as we are, uh, working through some of the finer details and always doing it with grace and, uh, and laughter and, and working to get to, um, you know, high level thinking and she's always willing to do that. And I want to just make sure that I also said thank you to Michelle for, for helping put all this together.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm so glad you are president because you say it right. You say it right. You have finesse. Thank you so much. Um, as a Marine, the best I can say is thank you very much. Job well done and we are very happy to have you and we look forward to see even much more. Really appreciate it and we love that you're a people person too. Amazing.
All right. Seeing no other lights on, I will let Trustee Woodley have the last word on that. So thank you so much. All right, that closes item 4.05 and section four in its entirety and moves us now to section five. Now normally we would go straight to item 5.01 to our student representative, but, um, Superintendent Ernst may need to excuse himself at some point, so I am going to go ahead and jump over to 503, the superintendent's report, so we can hear from him to our community.
Thank you, President Smith. Um, so I wanted to take an opportunity, uh, during our superintendent highlights, uh, to just recognize the magnitude of the situation, uh, with our Davis fire. Uh, I don't think there's anyone in here that is not impacted in one way or another and some more substantially so than others. Um, and so, uh, I just want to begin by honoring all of those, uh, and, uh, recognizing the impact that has occurred and, um, trying to continue to think forward and work to the greatest extent possible to continue to keep our community safe and work with our local agencies, um, to do so. Um, and I also want to just express our gratitude, uh, that we have in Washoe County School District on agencies working so well with us to help provide us information that allows us to make , uh, decisions in the best interest of our students. And, um, that collaboration is really, uh, vital and I always find that emergency-like situations can very much reveal the best about humanity and so that's certainly evident. We certainly have work to do right now and, um, and, uh, there's work to still be done, but I just, and you know, um, uh, Clerk Rodriguez, I just want to say thank you to you. I know that Vice President, uh, Mayberry's not here. Uh, there's just tremendous efforts around a really serious situation and, um, and then our, our team coming together, willing to meet on the drop of a dime to make sure that we're, um, thinking things through and really making sure that we're not making any decision that is, is, is not trying to turn over every stone. And I really appreciate that about the team in terms of the way we go about interacting to get to really tough, critical decisions. So I just wanted to take an opportunity, I appreciate you allowing me that opportunity to do that. And then it gets to our schools and, and so I want to tell you this, this is just amazing. I talked about this staffing vacancies and I, I will tell you that without the work that occurred in the summer and getting to the level, there would be no way we could have opened 90% of our schools today. It simply would not have been a possibility. But by doing that, we were able to get to 90% of our community getting back and we know families have, have their challenges and they're going to work, but I want to share some of the, some of the beauty behind things and that's, um, so we know we have schools closed and some of our teachers don't live in those areas. And so what we ask teachers on a volunteer basis to do, uh, and in working with our associations and partners, we asked them if they would be willing. We knew they couldn't go to their school, but we knew we had vacancies at other schools. Our associate chiefs knew every vacancy we were looking at for today and asked them to go and work at other schools just on a voluntary basis. That's the quality of people, that's the kind of staff that we have. And I just think that that's important for people to know. So just wanted to, to speak to that from the Davis fire, uh, perspective. I also wanted to speak to, um, the recent, uh, event and threats that have been made. Um, we talked about it briefly, uh, already today, uh, but I do want everyone to know how important we take those threats. And, um, we were late into Saturday night, early into Saturday morning, um, working to investigate because, um, school safety is everything, uh, to us. Uh, and I, uh, thank our school police officers who, who, um, represent that every day. Um, and we really were looking at this situation, uh, very critically and I, and I give a lot of credit to our students, our families, our community members who really surfaced this right away. And, um, it was just tremendous efforts and then the leadership of, of school police and their work with the FBI and other authorities helped us get to the bottom of a threat that really was, um, unsettling during, uh, this time. And I want folks to know that when those situations occur and we are able to get to the bottom of those, uh, that we will move, uh, forward to the full extent that we can because that is not acceptable. If we're trying to raise and decrease chronic absenteeism, people have no idea what those types of threats do to our students, to our families, to our staff. And so when those pieces come forward, we are going to move forward, we are going to make an arrest and we are going to do everything we can. And I just really appreciate the determination throughout Sunday. Uh, again, uh, I don't know if the leadership team or a whole lot of people slept this weekend, uh, but, uh, they were really determined, everyone again, uh, working together. And then I take it to some of the enhanced security that we put in and those are good things. Safety and belonging, that's our beam, right? And so, uh, the pieces that we've put in from the single points, the, the films and the, 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 the different security measures that, that were a part of the, the plan that, that you saw from synergics, simply, um, every second counts and when we have situations, it's immediate mobilization to the quickest extent. And I think we've seen some evidence, uh, at least of, um, these pieces being critical layers to the safety of which we're trying to get to and maintain at all times. So I did want to, uh, uh, talk about that just a little bit. Uh, and then- And then, you know, finally, I, I think I want to also conclude kind of on that uplifting note. And that is, I talked about how proud I am to, to, to be able to work in this capacity and work with various leaders that we have in the community. And I'm really happy to have been able to sit most recently with our, the mayor of Reno. And we had some wonderful conversations. And one of those was around Washoe County School District, having an opportunity to come forward to our city council to present the incredible work we're doing around a facilities modernization plan. What we're doing in that area is just substantial for our community. It benefits beyond just education. And so being able to come out and show the collective work that we are all doing, I think is, is really kind of a, a nice opportunity and perhaps something that, that hasn't happened before. And, and I think we welcome that and are ready to lean into that space. So you could probably see, I could probably go on and on and on. But I'm really proud, thank you everyone for being here. And we'll continue to work as hard as we can for the benefit of our students, our staff and our families. So thank you.
Thank you. I wish all of you out there could feel the wonderful energy coming off of you towards Superintendent Ernst. So thank you so much for that superintendent's report. Very much understand that you may need to, to pop up and to leave, although we are coming close to the end of our meeting, but please feel free to do that. So that closes item 5.03 and brings us now back to item 5.01, our student representatives' report.
All right, hi everyone. Over this last weekend, I know there was a lot happening, but with the work that everyone's been doing, I would say that at least where I'm at, we had a really seemingly seamless transition back into school. And you know, people talk, but it didn't really feel like many people were talking today. So props to everyone who was working on helping all the issues this weekend. School's kind of ramping up, obviously with all the things happening, sports and activities. So it's been great to see a lot of people flourishing in all the activities they're doing. We have seen a lot of growth in student voice and the areas that we're growing in it include possible student voice councils in elementary schools, which would look a little different than high schools and middle schools, but we may be looking into that. We've had a few meetings already and we've seen a lot of diversity in our group and it's been really great talking with everyone. Oh, I feel like I had, so, oh, and another thing coming up for students. There's a small group of us that will be helping with an event called Flip the Script and we might be working with students from Clark County, which would be great. And we'll be helping ask questions for some district members. So that's a really great opportunity that I've been presented and that some of our other students will help us with. So it's kind of what's been going on lately.
Well, thank you so much, Annie, I appreciate that. And that closes item 5.01 and section five in its entirety. And we'll move on now to section six, our closing items, starting with item 6.01, our public comment. JJ, who do we have with us today?
Daniel Gomez.
Hi, Mr. Gomez, it's very nice to see you. Yeah, come on up. Yep, no, right out here. Thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you. The last few hours have been a real education in itself. So I'll try to get to this quickly, okay? I do have the, the 12 single sheets for a summary for you. Something you can take with you and review. So thank you esteemed board members for your time. I just wanted to recap the topic at a high level and read a little more detail into what I sent you yesterday. For your reference, I provided a one sheet summary of the salient points of my request. Please note the highlighted points. The first part is my request to Kate Segroy, I hope I got that right, CCA Assistant Director NIAA. The second part is simply the Washoe County School District zoning tool found on the internet. And the third part is the response from Kate Segroy acknowledging the lawful request and handing it over to the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees for any final approval. So it reads, "To Kate Segroy, please see my official request for a final appeal hearing. This is not now a hardship appeal, but an appeal for a hearing based on newly by me discovered NRS. Thank you. Note subsection three of NRS 388A dot 474 and the use of the word or, which is a legal term. Here or is used as a disjunctive, meaning it separates things. For example, in contrast to and, which is conjunctive and combines things, the word or tells the reader to take your pick. So NRS 388A 474, Board of Trustees required to allow pupil to participate in class or activity of school district in which pupil resides in certain circumstances, revocation of approval. Subsection three, upon the request of a parent or legal guardian of a pupil who is enrolled in a charter school, the Board of Trustees of the school district in which the pupil resides shall authorize the pupil to participate in sports at the public school that he or she would otherwise be required to attend within the school district. Or, upon approval of the Board of Trustees, any public school within the same zone of attendance as the charter school, if space is available for the pupil to participate and B, the parent or legal guardian demonstrates to the satisfaction of the Board of Trustees that the pupil is qualified to participate." And then below you see the Washoe County School District School Zone Indicator. And if you read down through it, the finding demonstrates that Charter School Coral Academy is in fact within the same zone of attendance as Demone Ranch High School. Then following is the, the response from Ms. Segroy. Good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Gomez. The statute you have cited, NRS 388A dot 474, subsection three requires you to obtain the approval of the Board of Trustees of the Washoe County School District WC-
Thank you so much, Mr. Gomez. I know it is a three minutes, but we all do have this right here in front of us.
There's just one line at the bottom if I might add.
I can't, I'm so very sorry, but we're very, very grateful. We're very, very grateful. Thank you so much.
Okay, maybe we can address this at a later time through email.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Darla Lee.
Hi, welcome, Ms. Lee. Thank you for being with us and I love your scarf.
Thank you. Yes, Darla Lee for the record. And yeah, I didn't expect to be the last man standing here, but I felt it was important for you folks as trustees to sometimes hear directly from people on the ground, so to speak, because a lot of these meetings seems to be way up here. And I was glad to see that the superintendent brought forward the, the subject of chronic absenteeism because I happen to live, as maybe some of you recall, in the HOA directly across from Hug High. And we are continuing to have the same problems that we've had since that school opened. And that is having students wandering through our private streets. And it has become, as the school year has developed, I can give you just a quick example where I left and around lunchtime and folks that were from the school, I saw coming in the, our entrance, knowing we're going to hang out on our grass, leave their water bottles. And sometime I have to say, I pick up a lot of the little, you know, tiny vodka bottles, you know, their little miniatures. And that is, is I go through the neighborhood and pick up trash, which I do. And this is, it's just a total disrespect for property. But I call Rochelle Murillo and say, there is, and at that point, I saw a gang of at least, you know, eight or so students coming in when I was leaving. And she said, I'll send somebody out, which she did. Congratulations to her, she does a great job. But so unfortunately, these kids that on the first initial round were, at least some of them were taken back to school. Some of them just run off or say F you and go on their way. And that's her telling me this, not my imagination. But when I came back, that was when I left, I called her, she sent somebody out. I came back and there was even more of a group of kids that were congregating on our streets. So she sent three more people. And just today I left again about lunchtime, same scenario. When I come back, the group is larger. So I'm sorry, but it's, it's going beyond just chronic absenteeism. These kids go to school and then they just feel like they can leave. And I, you know, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. We appreciate you being here.
Jeff Church.
I'll be very brief. From time to time, been about a year, I hand out ideas for agenda items. So here's five core values that I'd like us to discuss as possible agenda items. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. All right, that closes item 6.01 and brings us on now to 6.02, our next meeting, which will be September 24th, 2024. And now to item 6.03 at 4:31 PM. I adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much.